I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the discipal with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, we'll move this thing along and can I get a motion for the approval of the minutes of the May 22nd, 2014? Any discussion? Ms. Woodrow?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
Excuse me. Can I get an appro- a motion for the approval of the treasurer's financial report dated May 31st, 2014? So, order.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Woodrow?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
All right. I know everybody's in a hurry and I've got a few things I want to cover with you. Have some preliminary numbers for the general fund for fiscal year 14. Deficit spending of about $339,470. Got tomorrow and Monday, yeah, there's something that happened to come in. Had a large payroll expense, kind of cleaning some things out at the end of the year. A lot of substitutions came in from PD, various sources. We did, there were a few things that came in, we just decided to go ahead and pay. We cleaned out and done before we start the fiscal year. Compared to last year, last year we had a deficit of $321,000, so pretty close to where we were last year. We did, of course, group raises for the staff, made some substantial changes to medical insurance and so forth, so we balanced things out, if you will. All in all, could have been a lot worse, could have been better, but we're okay with where our carrier balance is at. 99% accurate on our revenues where we forecast and 98% on expenses, so again, we're pretty well dialed in on that. For the month of May, we lost $507,000, spent more than we brought in, again, consistent with last year. It seems to be a pretty normal impact for the year. This evening, I did get in touch with our solar company with the project. We've run into, I'll call it a pretty substantial hiccup at this point, political slash business. Three weeks ago, Governor Kasich signed Senate Bill 310 into law, which froze the amount of green energy renewables that utility companies have to purchase. Didn't hit me at the time, but ADP flagged our project and there's another one in southeast Columbus for review, whatever that meant. Just thought they were checking things out. Continued to delay this the last three weeks. Today, I called the project manager and asked, hey, can I get an update? We've got a meeting tonight, it's supposed to be approved tomorrow anyways. ADP has conditionally approved it, if you will. There's a circuit breaker in town, basically, I don't know where it's located, but if somebody were to hit a pole, knock it down, they would keep their local grid from shorting out. Well, ADP is saying, if you want to pay to replace that circuit, meaning the solar company, because there's no cost to us, they'll approve the project. The gentleman who, from ADP, who spoke to our project manager, gave an initial cost of $35,000 at a minimum for this circuit. So, the solar company, there's a gentleman on vacation, they're not going to know anything definitive till next week, but they were less than optimistic that they would proceed at this point. It changes the economics pretty substantially. ADP did the same thing to a project in Columbus that's three times our size, that circuit's about $100,000, $115,000 to replace. I don't know if it's coincidence or not, but ADP has thrown up a tremendous amount of red flags on this thing here at the last minute for approval after Senate Bill 310 was passed, which capped the amount of renewable energy that's taken. Maybe it's purely coincidental, I don't know, but for 18 months, this thing's been soaring through, we're at the last step when we get approval. Outside chance this thing will get approved, but I just don't know. I'm less than optimistic given the conversation this afternoon, but if we're fortunate, it's a great deal for the district moving forward. So, we'll see, as soon as I hear, I'll email you an update on that. Jake Grau and I, Mr. Kimmel, we've had discussions. Jake and I met this week with Plug Smart and looking at a Houseville 264 project to upgrade lighting to LED outside, do some work on gymnasium lighting, I don't know if you've been to Gauken, see how bright their gym is, looking to do similar here as well, as well as replace boilers in the high square. Three pretty old boilers, one of them is leaking, we have to do it regardless. That project alone, on the initial estimate, is approximately $146,000. Houseville 264 will let us finance that out over 15 years. The initial estimates have this payback based on savings in about 10 years. We did, they threw in some things that, I don't want to say weren't warranted, but to me were gimmicky, a little more mechanical, but what I want, things to wear out, didn't know if it justified us. We have them pairing these things back, hoping to be somewhere in that $350,000, $400,000 range. We'll bring it to you guys once we've shaken everything out. We do have a boiler issue, we can wrap into this project and finance versus having a pretty substantial capital outlay. So, this appears to make some sense on the initial part of this thing. We'll have more details as we progress out of the summer. Other than that, we're in year-end mode, we're already in contact with auditors, we're calling, we're wrapping down, closing the year out Monday. We're in that dig-down, dry mode in our office for the next couple of months as we close up the year. Concludes my report.
All right. Any questions for Ryan? Okay. Was there an indiscipline?
No, no indisp-.
Okay. Onto committee reports and we will bypass Mr. Stone, Mr. Schiefer, and Ms. Woodrow. I have my view of the season.
Just maybe some dates, the dead week starts February, June 30th, Monday, or Sunday or Monday. Looks like in July, we've got girls volleyball camp, our initial drug testing, July 16th, and then I think both gyms are to be refinished in July.
We have two 7-on-7s, 19th and 26th. Twenty-some teams for the first and 30-some for the second. So, volunteers are needed.
Officiate.
Officiate, cook hot dogs, store, whatever you want. All right. Is that it? Okay.
Mr. Cook, I would like, Mr. Cook?
Yes.
I would like to mention that we've purchased or replaced to install the softball scoreboard with Adena, so that'll be, should be taking place here before school starts.
Thank you.
All right. We'll bypass Mrs. Stone and go to Dr. Johnson.
Well, obviously, OAA and OGT results are back just over the last couple of days and I really haven't had a chance to look at, looks like we have to report our places. So, rather than speculate or talk off the cuff, I have nothing else to report.
All right. Neither do I. Lori, did you have anything to add?
Well, that's fine.
Okay. And on to Mr. Kimmel for the superintendent's reports.
Good evening. With that to your plate tonight, you should have received, as Dr. Johnson mentioned, the initial unofficial results of our OAS and OGTs. I will say that we are also in the process of taking a look at all the numbers and what they mean. We do have a administrative meeting scheduled for Monday to start looking at the, all of the accountability data book. But if you want to just point to the first page there, do know that the state has increased the percent needed in order to meet, to meet that standard, that state standard, so we'll move from a 75% to an 80%. So, you can see there that we met in 4th grade reading, 8th grade reading, 8th grade math, and 10th grade writing. We would have picked up an initial, additional four or five in those areas with the indicator I stated at 75, but the bar has been raised and we have to step up to meet that 8% mark. Couple highlights that came from Mr. Henderson here. I do know that only one student in 8th grade did not pass the reading portion of the OAA. We've never had, we've never earned such a high rating, so we're going to take a look at what, what happened this year in 8th grade reading in order for all the students to pass that, with the exception of one student. All 16 special ed students at 8th grade level passed the reading portion, so that's one of the subgroups that we struggle to meet to continuous growth, is our special ed students. So, we're going to take a close look at 8th grade reading and see if we can duplicate that in other grade levels. Some other points, a couple other points there is that the next page shows the OIP goals. Interesting piece there is we have a pretty high goal for ourselves to reduce the number of non-proficient students by 10% each year. So, if you look at, the baseline year was 2011, 2012, and how this chart reads is, so if you look at 3rd grade reading in 2011, it was 32.1% non-proficient. So, you can do the math, the other proportion of that is, since we were proficient. You follow the arrow down, in 2012, the goal was 28.9 non-proficient, and we actually moved that to a 17.1, so we met that goal last year. Then you move on now, as 5th graders, in 13, 14, the goal was to reduce it and they did not meet the goal this year. So, looking at the, all of the areas there in math, we met, we met the OIP goal in 7th grade reading, 8th grade reading, and 10th grade reading. 11th grade results are not in that chart at this point, so that's still pending. And then in math, we met it just at the 8th grade level for the second straight year. And so, we're going to take a look at those OIP goals and that's really an indication of growth as opposed to proficiency. And like I said, we're still, this is all unofficial results, I don't know if Mr. Rol or Dr. Burke would like to add anything into their areas of responsibility on as far as the test scores go.
Really, nothing to add there, except seeing some growth in our middle school OAS. I know that we're going to try to meet with the 8th grade staff to see if anything, what they did differently this year, maybe it was a different strategy to use or a different test, to try to figure out maybe what helped get that success. And Mr. Maser, Mr. Dennis and I have already, you know, been trying to pour through, bless you, by each individual student, to see if there's any patterns that show there. So, it's still very preliminary, still very new and young, and I know we're going to meet Monday to go over to the data center to see, bless you again.
Thank you.
We still have to count those kids who do count for us and do count, you know, don't count for us based on their attendance, and so, you know, those numbers could still fluctuate just a little bit, so eager to get into that, but we're kind of optimistic by some of the growth we've seen.
And preliminarily, I'll have to say that we're disappointed, be disappointed, but not, what do I want to say, not dejected. We're going to maintain positive outlook, but it is one that, very simply, when Mr. Sauter and I reviewed the information on Monday when it came out, we were, we were taken aback to see that we met one. It's not acceptable, it's not something that we're pleased with and therefore something that we need to address.
Mr. Rol, if you could provide a brief update on the 3rd grade reading guarantee and the students that that impacted. We did see quite a, quite amount of growth from the fall reading OAA, where only roughly 40-some percent of our students were proficient in the fall to the 70, almost 71% in the spring, but what the benchmark for that to be retained, I believe, was 392. Give a little bit of an update there on the 3rd grade reading guarantee results.
Yes, I'll have to, I'm going to go on memory, didn't bring that information with me, but we had 49 students who were not successful, and I know these numbers, one way or the other, we had, and of those, either 21 or 28 of those students are special education students and students who are retained previously, and so they are not held to the requirement to be retained. Then the, we had 21 students then who, very simply, when they left the last day of school, had on their report card that they were tentatively retained pending these outcomes. And then when we received the final results, we currently have four students who are currently to be retained as 3rd graders. And so, and let's see if we had that. We had, and I'm, I can't remember a number, I will say I sent out in excess of 15 letters congratulating students who had met the 293 required number and congratulated them on being, if you will, being promoted to 4th grade. The thing that, that we also had, we had a number of our special education students who were, while they were not held accountable to that score, did reach a proficient score, and so we congratulate them. Right now, we had 23 students who were invited to our OAA bootcamp this week with Mrs. Haldeman, and I will say, three of the four students who did not pass are to be retained, were in attendance. One, the one who did not, we have received preliminary information, is going to be attending a neighboring district, and despite five contacts with that family, the child did not come. But we want to concentrate on those that did. We had 10 students, again, three of the four to be retained, and then additional students attend, and they, we were in session four days this week. All 10 students were there all four days, so we had perfect attendance. It was a very positive experience for those students, as provided by Mrs. Haldeman. A letter went out to the families of the students who have not yet achieved the 293 score, and stuck those in the mail a day. We have one additional intervention with Mrs. Hoover, our literacy coach, the 7th, 8th, and 9th of July, and then our students will have the opportunity to take the first-time summer OAA on July 10th. And the thing that, again, very pleased with is, so we are looking for three of our three students who have been retained due to 3rd grade reading guarantee to participate in the next one and to then take that test. But more importantly, and I think it speaks volumes, we have students who are special education students and students who have been previously retained, who are not required to come to any interventions nor retake the test, but we have a number of students who are doing that. It's not going to impact the, the report card, we know that, but it's one thing that, there again, in terms of areas of concentration, you know, the thing that we're looking at is helping those students to be better, you know, prepared for the beginning of school next year and then hopefully turn some things around and get some things headed in the right direction next year with their 4th grade testing. So, I do appreciate the families and the students who are making that dedicated effort, and it's that kind of, of effort that, again, we are going to be looking to, to improve upon our schools.
Okay. All right. Just a couple other points I want to, want to make here on my report before I open up to any questions. Later on in the agenda, under the classified staff section, I'd like to announce Ms. Debbie Music as the replacement for Tina Herniman as the administrative assistant to the superintendent. We had 43 applicants for this position and many, many qualified individuals. We interviewed eight candidates first round, brought back two finalist candidates, and Debbie was the top vote getter with our committee, and she obviously is a Bussaras community member and supporter of the school district, and we look forward to adding her to our staff starting August 1st. The last item, in business tonight, there is a recommendation to revise the calendar for next school year to include two teacher in-service days, those being on September 19th and February 13th. With the move from, from days to hours, we're no longer required to submit a waiver day request to ODE. The board simply can change the calendar based on a vote, and we are well in excess to the hours that are required from the state. And actually, per statute, they allow for up to two days of teacher in-service time to be counted as instructional time, and that does not count against the hours of kids in session. So, that is on the business for your consideration tonight. Any questions?
No, sir.
Have a safe return.
Obviously, nobody's here to address us, okay. Moving on to personnel certified staff.
President Burke, members of the board, it's my recommendation that you approve items A through G, with the exception of B, under the personnel certified staff section of the agenda. So, A through G minus item B.
Can I get a motion, please? Some, any discussion? Roll call. Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Ms. Woodrow?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
President Murph, it's my recommendation that the board approve item B under the personnel certified staff section of the agenda.
Can I get a motion?
No.
Support. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Woodrow?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson, let's stand.
Could I please interject something with regards to certified staff? Not on here, but just so folks are aware, this will be in for the next board meeting. They received yesterday indication of resignation from Emily Haas, 5th grade intervention specialist. So, we are currently beginning that search at this time, and so that will no doubt come onto the agenda next week, or next month. And also, while not a Bussaras city employee, also unfortunately today, received notification of a resignation of our second speech language pathologist, Nikki Baker, is going to be relocating closer to Hermon. So, again, received initial information with regards to that, and so those will be positions that we'll be working to fill as well.
Thank you. Thank you. And on to the personnel classified.
President Burke, members of the board, it's my recommendation that you approve items A through F under the personnel classified staff section of the agenda.
A through B. Yeah.
A through what?
A through E. Mr. Murph is on item F.
Oh, that's right, okay. A through E, I apologize.
It's all right, sorry, Ken. Can I get a motion, please? Any discussion? Roll call. Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Woodrow?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Yes.
President Murph, members of the board, it's my recommendation that you approve item F under the personnel classified staff section of the agenda.
Some, roll call. Vote it down. Vote it down.
The background.
The background, yes.
Like to pass CPR.
How do we do, Frank?
No.
Where were we?
Roll call.
That don't work. Roll call. Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Let's stand.
President Murph, members of the board, it's my recommendation that you approve items A through R under the business section of the agenda.
Can I get a motion, please? Support. I would, I would just like to make a comment in regard to item A there. Mr. Kimmel's contract, this is in no way a reflection of the job that Mr. Kimmel has done. He, when it was to renew, it was merely a timing thing, we were in the midst of the teacher negotiations and it automatically rolled over. So, we will be bringing an extension next month, but wanted to, we did make some minor changes, which we saw, so I just wanted to point that out, that this is in no way a lack of support for Mr. Kimmel. Roll call, please. Ms. Woodrow?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and under discussions, we've got two items tonight. I'm going to turn the floor to Dr. Burke to discuss the updated 2014-15 secondary student parent handbook.
Thank you, Superintendent Kimmel. A lot of the changes are, are minor. Mr. Kimmel did give us an updated copy of a, a model handbook from Niola that we did work from to update, to make sure some policies and language was, was more appropriate matching of the board policy. All the changes that you see, we did try to highlight in yellow so it'd be a little easier to locate. A lot of it, again, is, there are minor tweaks. Some of the sections are a little more lengthy than what they would have been before. We've, we've elected to remove this from our print, the handbook that we print for every kid, because that was very costly, and, and we're going to post it online and give kids copies, hard copies, and inform parents at a different avenue. I think by pulling this section out of the handbook, it saves a little over $1,000 in our purchase of handbooks. And also, if things need to change, if policy changes, we can change that on the website and send things home and be a little bit more responsive to what things are changing. So, some, some articles that we would have maybe taken a paragraph out or edited a little bit to make it a little bit more cost-effective, when we print that, we just left all the language in, and so it is a little bit more lengthy. There's a couple that I want to point out. On page two, you'll see that the, the student schedule, again, that is highlighted, it's a little bit different than, than what we did this year and for a couple of reasons. We wanted to separate the lunches out, that way the high school kids have a separate lunch time than the middle school students, so then going into next year, other than the entry bell and the exit bell, high school students and middle school students will never be in the hallways or any common space at the same time, getting further separating any kind of interaction there. So, that, that's one aspect of it. The other aspect is it's an ADP lunch, and what we're going to do, the opposite lunch of, a student may have a lunch A, but B, they may go to National Honor Society Student Council. Our numbers of our, our programs have dwindled because a lot of it happens after school. A lot of our kids are in sports or band or choir, and they can't be two or three places at one time. So, by scheduling some time within the day for them to meet with their advisors, we're hoping that the numbers will go up. But also, within that time, I've talked to Mr. Henderson, Ms. Hoover, some of our teachers there will also be in the middle school and in the high school, so very specific and intentional interventions provided to those students who are still maybe at deficit of reading or some math deficits, preparing for OGT, maybe preparing to take the OGT again, or just some kids maybe that are struggling readers, that may need some, some needed support there. So, we're trying to build, at the middle school, we're going to try to call them camps. You could go to different camps, and each camp is focusing on a different skill that the kid may need. So, trying to use that meaningful and purposeful time, not just study hall, so to speak. And so, we're still in the, the planning process of what that looks like, but I did want to point that out, that the time schedule... point that out, that the time schedule is different. I did check the board before doing it, and she thinks we can pull it off. Another added benefit to that is it's going to help us preserve that, that little theater. We use it for lunches and just, you get 350 kids eating in there every day, things get messy, things get torn up a little bit. So at this point, it'll be used in the morning for entry and breakfast, but after it's cleaned for breakfast, the doors will be shut and the little theater will be preserved and try to maintain that, that beautiful facility as much as we can. So that's another added bonus to doing that. An additional item that's in this handbook, that was not in last year's handbook, was on page 17, and it goes over fire, storm, and safety drills within the policy, I believe, if I can scroll a little bit quicker. It does make mention of, a safety drill will be conducted once per year, which we will be doing, and then that we will be trying to, again, we started this last year when we had the police department come in and train our teachers of what an active shooter training would look like, to go through this, how to protect themselves in the classroom and how to barricade doors. So we've, we've started that, we just want to continue that planning with the police department and, and just continue to renew and, and reteach and retrain our teachers on how to respond in a situation of any kind of person in the building or a threat in the building. And so that piece is, is in there that is additional to last year. And then one major piece that, after speaking with Mr. Cook and Mr. Kimmel on page 37, there is a new attendance policy for the educational options program. Because of the change in funding and how they're going to pull data down and how they're going to fund, it's not going to be a one, one week in October funding, count weeks anymore, it's going to be daily. And so we have to maintain daily attendance, and so with that, educational options students will be enrolled in the educational options program, be required to log in daily. Student attendance will be based on the students daily entering an online coursework per the district calendar, so when we're in session, they need to log in. They can log on weekends, they can log in more than once a day, but they have to log in. And we did separate out that progress will be monitored on the number of hours logged in and coursework completed. So there is a, there's going to be two ways to monitor kids, it's going to be daily attendance and progress, and those will be monitored separately. They'll need to log on, and they'll log on for a little while, you know, one day, but then an extended period of time the next day, but they will have to log on every day or that will count as an absence. So that is a major piece in there with the educational options program, and again, it's found on page 37. Everything else is either a minor tweak of a word, you know, other than a will, might be a shall, and, and, and other than that, it might just be expansions of things. So please look through those and, and again, next, next month, if you have any questions about things that you run over, be happy to address those individually.
Thank you.
The second item this evening is an overnight trip for the band, their annual camp that they attend, and due to the timing on that, we would ask for your, your consideration to approve that item tonight, since our next board meeting will be during that band camp.
Any issues, will I?
I'll move to approve. Yes, David.
Roll call. Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Wetterer?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Any communications? Any announcements?
Just like to announce that we will be having a district-wide back-to-school event on Wednesday, August 21st. There'll be a time period from like 5:30 to 6:30 for the elementary. Parents and students will be able to come in and see the building and potentially maybe meet some teachers that evening if, and then there'll be an opportunity then that the secondary bill will be open. If, anybody who attends either open house that night will have a ticket to receive a free dinner that night, and thank you to Lori Pennington and Sedex Hill for stepping up and, and providing the funding for that event that night, will help take care of the food costs. There'll be no cost to the district if we can get, get that paid for through Sedex Hill, so thank you Lori for putting that together. And then that evening, after the, the secondary open house, we will have a, a meet the team out at the football field, where all the fall sports will be introduced, and we'll have a short community pep rally that evening of the August 21st.
It's actually the 20th, Kevin, not Wednesday.
Yeah, so that, that date should read the 20th, not the 21st.
Yeah.
But if it, Wednesday is correct.
Okay, I just want to be safe.
Yes.
Sorry.
And that, and that's all the announcements I have.
All right, well, looks like we can get a motion to adjourn. Support. Roll call, please. Ms. Wetterer?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Schiefer?
Yes.
Mr. Murph?
Yes.
We are adjourned.